Good evening and welcome to the October 22nd School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. Dr. Leclerc?
Good evening, everyone. Could we please stand for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next regular school committee meetings will be on November 12th and December 10th. The swearing-in ceremony for newly elected officials will be Thursday, January 2nd, 2020. The school committee will have their first organizational meeting at the conclusion of the swearing-in ceremony. And just to let everyone know, there are half-days of school on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of this week due to teacher professional development and parent-teacher conferences. There is a half-day of school also on Tuesday, November 5th, due to city voting and teacher professional development. And there is no school on Monday, November 11th, due to Veterans Day. There is also no school on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, November 27, 28, and 29, due to Thanksgiving break. And there is no school beginning -- oh, I'm sorry. There are half-days on Monday and Tuesday, December 9th and 10th, due to teacher professional development. And there is no school beginning Monday, December 23rd, through Wednesday, January 1st, due to the winter break. Schools will reopen on Thursday, January 2nd. This weekend, I wanted to let everyone know that both equity committees will be meeting for a day-long training on Saturday, October 26th, at East Hampton High School. Also, on the Saturday, October 26th, the World Language Department will be holding a craft fair at EHS, which Sophia might be talking about, so I won't take anything away from that. And just a building update, the building project is out to bid, and we hope to have a contractor selected at the end of November. Work will begin this winter, but we will hold off for a groundbreaking ceremony until the warmer weather in the spring. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any correspondence?
No.
Do we have any gifts?
No.
All righty. And this is the portion of our meeting for public speak. Is there anyone who'd like to come up and talk? No? All righty. Subcommittee updates. Policy update.
We have quite a few policies. And actually, Shannon, I was wondering if you would want to take the lead on these. I was ill the night when the policy subcommittee reviewed these, so I missed that meeting.
Okay.
Perhaps you would be able to walk us through them?
We just went through some of the old items or items that were in there as a -- what do I want to call it? What is it called?
Procedure instead of policy.
A procedure, yes, instead of a policy. So, we are going to delete IGDF, which is currently our student fundraising activity, and we will be replacing it with the MAS-C version, JJE. ACR, non-discrimination, will be deleted. It is a procedure. AE, we will be deleting. It's a mission statement core value, which is outdated, but also should not be in our policy manual. BDR, school committee meetings, again, is a procedure that needs to be removed. EBCB-r-1 is fire drills, which, again, was a procedure. And EBCB fire drills was the preceding procedure to the -1. So, those will also be removed.
Great.
Okay. All right. So, I think we need to go to --
Do we need to do official ones?
To delete these. So, do we have a motion to -- you're making a motion to delete?
I would like to make a motion to delete 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, and add number 2.
I'm happy to second that. I wish Sue were here, because I feel like she would maybe tell us we have to do them individually. But if we want to risk it and perhaps have to do them again, I just know in the past I've tried to do them in a group.
Would you want to do them individually?
Sure, we can do them individually.
I don't want to be a stickler, but I just don't want it to be invalid. I'm sorry.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to delete IGDF, which is our old student fundraising activity.
I second that. Be great.
All those in favor?
I make a motion to add JJE, which is the MAS-C version of student fundraising activities.
I second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to delete AC-r, which is a procedure, non-discrimination.
Second.
All those in favor?
I've missed -- I'm sorry to slow you roll, but if it's first reading, don't we actually make the motion on second reading?
We need Sue. We're worthless without her.
You are. Why are we voting on it? It's first reading.
You're making a motion to move it to a second reading.
To a second reading.
Yes.
That's the --
Yes. It's not done.
Done.
It just will move to a second reading.
Second reading. Should I rephrase my motions?
I think we're --
Okay. I just want -- I'm like, wait a minute. What are we doing?
Okay, I'm not going to. Okay, I would like to make a motion to move AE for deletion, second reading.
I'll second that.
First reading, you mean.
No, it'll --
Move it to second.
Got it.
Okay. We failed. You seconded. All those in favor?
Marin seconded. Aye.
Took me halfway through, didn't it?
Sue's going to love Reed looking through this video.
I would like to make a motion to remove BDR and move this to a second reading. Did I say it right the first time?
Yes, I second that.
I like that. Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion for EC -- oh, EBCB-r-1 to go to a second reading for deletion. Okay.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion for EBCB to move to a second reading for deletion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Yes. All right. So, are there any other subcommittee reports besides student?
I will say for the finance subcommittee that we are going to be meeting and have a report back for the next committee meeting. We will be reporting back on the annual review of finances from last school calendar year or fiscal year, excuse me. So, that will be happening at next school committee meeting.
Okay. And do we have a student update?
Yes, we do. So, the French exchange program just ended this morning. We had 15 students, there are two teachers from Brittany in France, stay with us for the past week, and it was a very emotional goodbye this morning. I'd have to say I'd say goodbye to my French student. And they visited classes with their students throughout the day, and they also visited White Brook. And as long as they visited the Norman Rockwell Museum, and we did like a canoeing trip. The PSAT happens last Wednesday for the 10th and 11th grade students, and I believe all went well with that. The volleyball team raised over $12,000 for breast cancer research.
$12,000?
No, I'm sorry, $1,200.
$1,200? Wow. Okay.
That would be crazy.
You live with that and said, wow.
I was going to pass out.
Oh, my gosh.
$1,200? That's still --
It's still a name. It's still a name.
Yeah. But that was last --
It's a lot of cookies.
I know. Oh, my gosh, imagine. Yeah. So, that was last Tuesday. And then, the Drama Club is putting on the play The Moors, directed by -- it's our first student-directed play by Caroline Major, who's a senior. The shows are Thursday, November 14th at 6:00, Friday, November 15th at 7:00, Saturday, November 16th at 7:00, and Sunday, November 17th at 2:00.
Was that the musical?
No, the musical's going to be in May. We delayed it because Ms. Davis had --
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I don't know what that is yet, though. But, and then the craft fair is -- the World Language Club is holding a craft fair this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and it's to help raise money for their trips to Portugal this year, and I believe also for Germany next year. And I believe all funds go to the World Language Club, and there will be, I think there's over 90 vendors attending, and there'll also be performances by students at the school.
Wow. Nice. All right. Any other updates? We have nothing on the agenda. Okay. Just to make sure I don't leave anything in.
Oh, the legislative update?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay. Well, we are very excited that tomorrow, at last, the Student Opportunity Act is going to the House. It passed in the Senate, and it is so hopeful that tomorrow it will also pass the House, which will lead to $1.5 billion increase in spending for education. Marin and I, around 10 days ago, were able to meet with four of the state reps from around the valley. It was a House party sponsored by the MTA, and they informed everybody that they truly believe that it's going to go forward. And people are still asked to contact state reps tonight, because they're eager to hear, because it helps them. And Lindsay Sabadosa said that even when you are not a constituent, she still adds the names to the list. So, I actually contacted five state reps last night. A few of them already got back to me and thanked me for the support, because they want to see this passed as well. And we also are asking that they support Amendment 55, which will enable the local districts to determine how that money is spent.
Should we just add the one thing that there's -- because of what's potentially going forward with this amendment and stuff, is that there will potentially, most likely, out of this vote, given that it passes, go into a subcommittee, though, to negotiate the difference between the Senate and the House bill. So, there's still some wiggle room, that's some negotiations that are going to happen, because they're not coming out with the exact same bill. And so, because of that, it's going to go in a subcommittee to negotiate, and then that'll be put forward to the mayor from there -- I mean, the mayor, to the governor.
To the governor.
So, you get to decide.
I was going to say, if I could decide, yeah.
Take care of it.
What a different city this would be.
But it's a wonderful hurdle, but there's some more steps.
Excellent. All right. Excellent. Anything else?
I guess I'll just say, you know, I don't want to take a whole lot of time for CES, because we're going to talk a whole lot about that in a minute, but one thing not related to this other business, I was just going to share that, I don't know if you folks knew that there is a deputy director search for the collaborative, and they did hire a new person for that position, who began as of October 3rd. I have yet to meet her myself, but I've spoken to the chair of the board of directors, and he's quite pleased with the hire. My understanding is she actually worked for the collaborative about 15 years ago as a director of the after-school programs. She's most recently a superintendent of the Sogus Schools in Springfield. So, I'll look forward to meeting her and --
Met her last week.
Oh, right.
Very nice.
Yeah. But that's all I'll say on that, because we're about to dive into a whole other thing.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. So, now for the superintendent update.
So, a few things. We have -- the first one on the agenda is the collaborative, is looking to get approval from our school committee for an amended collaborative agreement. They have two school districts that are interested in joining them, Gateway Regional and the Worthington School District. And in order to move forward with that, they need to have the majority of school committees approve their request to have these two communities added. There are some other pieces in it, and I think Jonathan was going to maybe dive into it just a bit and say a few things.
Sure. What I will say about the school districts, Gateway had been a member district previously, left the collaborative. I think they're actually one of the founding districts, left the collaborative, and now is seeking reentry, which means they will no longer get to be a founding district, but so yet. The other two amendments on the table are, one is just sort of a change in title for an individual. So, the previous agreement stated that the commissioner would have an appointed representative. The new language is that the commissioner will have an appointed liaison. I think that basically stems from the fact that this person doesn't really come to our meetings, to my knowledge, and doesn't really need to vote on things. So, it's sort of keeping that channel of communication open without having them actually take up a spot on the board. The second thing is related to surcharges. Currently, the collaborative is not allowed to charge more than 20% over the cost for member districts to non-member districts who use their services. They're essentially seeking a change to raise that to a 25% surcharge, which sort of has two things. First, you know, they're seeking new ways to raise funds, but also, I think ultimately they prefer that districts become members, so it's sort of increasing the benefit of being one. Of course, that doesn't mean that every single thing they do has that large of a surcharge. This is just giving them that extra sort of space to charge a little bit more for things that they deem it appropriate for. So, my understanding is we're sort of presenting this today, and we're not going to have a final vote on it, sort of like a first reading, I guess. I know that by the end of January 2020 is when they want all of the school committees to have gotten back to them, so we still have plenty of time to push this along to our next meeting to actually vote on.
Right. So, this is new business tonight, and then we'll vote on it next time.
Do you have any questions about any of that?
Is there any reason why it would not be in our interest or in the collaborative's interest to vote to?
As far as I can tell, no. Certainly based off of the conversations that we've had at our full meetings, everything definitely makes sense.
We'll do it.
I see no good reason to not let in new members, because the more we can work together, the better.
Right.
And I will say, we're going to invite Bill Deal, the director, to our next meeting, where we are going to vote on this. So, if anybody has any really detailed technical questions, he would be a great person to ask about them. But from my perspective, it's all things that I would be more than happy to have a support, so.
Madam Chair? If I -- so, in this report or in this request, is there, in the application process, any explanation from these two districts of why they'd want to join the collaborative, identifying special needs, that their collaborative, whether it's professional development or whatnot? Because my concern, and I'm not, or I'd like to hear from Mr. Deal, is exactly what it'll do to the stress on services and the staff that the collaborative has. I mean, they're super busy, and they have, I mean, they're doing, I mean, I agree, more of us together is just better quality. But in the interim, from now to the end of the school year, or depending on what positions they would need, what does that do to the services that we are getting and the other departments and districts?
So, that's a good question. I think, from my perspective, these two school districts are already using the collaborative services as non-members. So, it's not like they're going to increase the workload, or like, maybe so there's more people in the programs. It's just going to make it, it's just changing the structure of how they're participating with the collaborative.
Got it.
Yes.
In fact, the fact, I'd say making them members would probably decrease workload, because it kind of, you know, streamlines them rather than, I don't know exactly what they have to do to work with the nonmembers, but I'm sure there's an extra layer of billing and whatnot.
And in my sense, from when I was on the board, we're stronger with more school districts coming in than losing districts. So, I mean, I see no reason not to embrace this idea.
Yeah, I'm not, I just wanted to get that on record, that I don't take away.
Yeah, and they're very small. I mean, Worthington maybe has six to eight teachers in total. They're a small, little village school, and they're a whole district, yeah.
I think it's more of a benefit to those school districts, because if you become a member, then it opens up the door for a lot of different services that are going to cost less than being a nonmember. Okay.
It also makes sense, the other piece of this, being that they're raising the costs to nonmembers.
Right.
Sort of also balances out, so that people want to become members. And I'm sure they, you know, probably did some math on seeing if we no longer get these external fees with these two school districts, you know, how is that going to affect our budget? And so, maybe that's why they're having this increase right now? That'd be a question to ask the director when he comes next time.
Like an increase in the charge to nonmembers?
Yeah.
That's something that they were discussing, sort of regardless, over the past couple years, they've really changed their budget in a lot of ways, and like the whole organization of the organization, which I've mentioned. So, yeah, I think the raise was coming regardless. There are still, you know, they continue to expand their reach, so there's, you know, every year, new non-member districts that are participating in their programs and whatnot. So, this will, I'm sure they will see a benefit from it this year as well, right off the bat.
Cool.
Yeah. If you come up with any good questions, save them for Bill. I'm sure he'll love to answer.
Okay. So, we'll move that to matters for action for the next meeting.
The next meeting, yeah.
And so, B, under superintendent update, is about halfway through your packet, there is a DESC policy on dissection alternative activities. So, this is new guidance from the Department of Education, and so, I am looking to see if we could have a vote to move this to the policy subcommittee for them to do their review and bring it back to you.
So, you're just looking for a motion to move it to the committee?
We're just looking for a motion and a vote to move it to the House.
And then the subcommittee will discuss it and then bring back their recommendations.
Yeah, it came to me, so it didn't come to the subcommittee.
Sure. In that case, I move we send a discussion of this topic, dissection and dissection alternatives to the policy subcommittee.
I second that. All those in favor?
And next, you have the October 1 enrollment. It's, I think, two pages down. And our enrollment, we are so fortunate compared to communities all around us that are struggling with decreasing enrollment. That is not the problem in East Hampton. That is definitely not the problem in East Hampton. So, our enrollment continues to be strong. What this will do, though, is one of the impacts is that we are going to probably be faced with the dilemma of taking less school choice students, particularly as we move forward, because we have more children in the community. So, those children get the spots, and we just don't have a lot of extra wiggle room. So, I'll entertain any questions, if anyone has any?
Just a quick point of clarification. I think I get it, but so each grade has two lines. That's just because there's two classrooms in each of the schools.
That's correct. We're at max classroom size in all three of our elementary buildings. We can only sustain two grades per building.
But I'd also point out, for people that can't see the chart that we're looking at, mostly, probably average class size here is 20.
Yes.
So, it's not maxed out, and we're over capacity in terms of our classrooms. We're still keeping our classroom-sized kids, and on average, it's 20 students.
We're keeping it manageable, yes.
Yes. So, I just thought that'd be important to point out.
Mm-hmm.
It is important.
I'm curious, Allison, what was the increase from the last time? Oh, here it is. Never mind.
Yep. So, last year at this time, we had, including our students that go to Smith, we had 1,587 students. This year, we have 1,586. So, we're staying right where we need to be.
Thank you. Superintendent Leclerc, I --
See 20.
Maybe it's -- so, right now, we have pre-K or we have Head Start classrooms?
Yes, to both of those questions.
Okay.
We have Head Start.
Yeah.
That's at White Brook.
Right.
That is not a school district.
Yeah.
They just use space.
Yes.
And we have preschools at Maple Elementary.
At Maple?
Yes.
Okay.
That's where our preschools are located.
So, the preschool, is that included in the kindergarten line on these, the reports?
No.
Meaning?
No. No.
And do we, do those just get, like, reported out through, what is it?
If you look, if you --
EEC or?
It's ECP. Do you see down at the bottom?
Yeah.
That's our preschool.
All the early childhood.
Early childhood program, ECP. Sorry.
All right.
Does that help?
Yeah. No, no, it did. Okay. So, then, when folks take advantage of the programming on Brush Hill, I always forget its name, the vocational, CTEC?
CTEC.
So, are they counted by the grade? Like, so if there's a grade 11 student goes to CTEC, and they're based in the high school, they're counted in the high school?
Yes.
And that's programming within their day?
Yes.
Okay.
That's because we own their MCAS scores and their transcript and everything. Yep. The difference would be Smith-Volk students leave East Hampton schools, and they go to the other district, yeah.
Compared to the number of students at Smith, do we know how many, roundabout how many go to CTEC?
I have that in my office.
Yeah, I'm not. I was just kind of swishing the numbers around in my head. And then the last question I have is, so, are, it's interesting to see the numbers stay steady on, steady on.
Yeah, we're lucky.
I mean, that's great. Do we get a report from DESI or somebody in the Department of Education that tells us how many total students or total number of residents in East Hampton could go possibly pre-K to 12 in our district or 13? So, like, if we're looking at?
So, we don't get that from the Department of, we get that from other schools.
Okay.
We share information with other schools.
Gotcha.
We share, we share information with neighboring schools if we have some of their children here.
Okay.
And they share information if they have some of our children there. We would not get pre-K and K numbers. A lot of pre-Ks are private.
Yeah.
And so, pre-K and K is not required in the state of Massachusetts, so it's kind of from first grade up. Those are the numbers that we get.
And then our homeschool students go through you?
Yeah, they go through me.
They file the curriculum?
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
So, I don't think we need to do anything with that. Okay. The next thing I have, and I'm going to get up for this, is I just want to share with you my goals for the school year. And you have, you have copies in small print in your packet, but I did wordsmith a little bit, so you're not exactly the same. If I could draw your attention up here, though, I just want to start by talking a little bit about the district improvement plan. This is something that we have been working on as a leadership team, and it is based on the entry plan from last year, all the focus groups, the surveys, everything that we did last year. We have kind of put all that together to think about our vision for the next few years. And I think it's important that as a school district, we kind of articulate the direction we want to go in, because it helps make budget decisions easier, staffing decisions, it helps us focus our work. So, we have three driving words at the top of our strategy for growth, community, excellence, and equity. Those are the words that have come through loud and clear in all of our work. Some of them carry over from the previous district improvement plan. Community was a big word used in the previous district improvement plan, but what you might find interesting is the word equity was not in the previous district improvement plan. The word equal was. And there's a distinct difference between equal and equitable. Equal, meaning everybody gets the same. And equitable, meaning that people get what they need. So, some people might get more or less depending on their needs. We made a very conscious decision to kind of strike the word equal in all of our documents and replace it with the word equitable. So, our vision has changed. Our vision, and a vision is what we aspire to, it's our pie-in-the-sky ideal, in partnership with our community. The East Hampton Public Schools are committed to providing exceptional learning experiences that foster academic, emotional, and social growth within a state-of-the-art, welcoming, and inclusive setting. In the next few years, we're going to have two state of the art schools in this community. That's really important for us to focus on. We will develop lifelong learners with knowledge and skills as independent, problem solvers, and critical thinkers. Our theory of action is simply when we design and implement a rigorous instructional program aligned with state standards and staff development, and we provide access to curriculum and programs for all, and we cultivate a respectful, engaged community of learners, then our students will become critical thinkers, global problem solvers, and achieve at their highest potential as evidenced through multiple assessment measures. We added the values in this district improvement plan. There were values in school committee documents that were never shared anywhere beyond the school committee and the budget book that went to the mayor's office. They were never disseminated in any of the schools, they were not on district documents. So we decided that we needed to make our values present. It's, it's about who we are and what we stand for. We started off by just identifying words that were our values. But then, based on feedback from administrators and teachers, we actually made statements because for, especially for our students, it's helpful if they understand what a value looks like and how we model it in our schools. So the East Hampton Public School community, this is all of us, this is the adults and the students, will demonstrate kindness, kindness, respect, and support towards each other by appreciating the contributions of others, valuing diversity, and honoring themselves and others through words and actions. We will work to create a community that is nurturing, inclusive, and equitable for all by overcoming barriers together, inviting new people into teams and circles of friends and experiences as we work in a unified collaborative community. We will engage as learners who persevere no matter what challenges arise, who see failure as a positive learning experience and never give up. And we will assume environmental stewardship by protecting the environment through recycling, conservation, regeneration, and restoration. Those were the values that we extracted from the work we did last year. So we have four strategic areas of focus and I'll, I'll stop here and I won't go through the whole thing because my goals are based on these four strategic areas. So I'm trying to draw the through line for you of the work that we're doing. Our strategic focus areas are meeting the needs of all learners. That speaks, that speaks to our equity initiatives. We also are striving for a high quality curriculum. We're looking at continuous growth. And finally, engagement and communication. And we have some rationales that follow and we also have some areas or action steps that we'll be working on. What we're also trying to do with our through line is the next level of this is at the school level. The school, each school will have the same strategic focus areas and their action steps will be identified by their school level and what they need to do in each of those areas. That might look different at the elementary level than it does at the high school level, but all of us need to be focusing on meeting the needs of all learners. So that's why we're trying to draw that through line. And then further down, which is not really anything that you, you know, care about, but my goals are based on those strategic focus areas. My principals will then give me their goals based on the strategic initiatives that they have in their buildings based on those focus areas. So we're trying to draw that through line all the way through. So I just wanted to show that to you. That's a work in progress, we're still, we're still wordsmithing that. And my goals. Let me see if I can make it a little bit bigger. I'm going to open it in the desktop app, that's bigger. So my goals for this year, I have five goals, I believe. Goal number one, my student learning goal. As the district leader, I will work with key administrators to identify district resources and monitor implementation practices at Center and Peppin Elementary Schools to ensure progress towards moving from turnaround status. We're in turnaround status, this is our second year at Center Peppin, and we've had some strategic meetings with the Department of Ed around equity. And instead of providing the same level of services to all three of our elementary schools, the Department of Ed is saying to us, no, you need to shift some resources, maybe away from Maple and put them at Center Peppin because those schools need to shore up what they're doing. So we are having some difficult conversations, but we understand that it's a matter of equity. They need to bring their scores up. We cannot go into a new building with such a diverse array of expectations and understandings around strong instructional practice. So we are focusing our work at Center Peppin this year. And we have shifted, we have a district literacy coach that is spending four out of five days at Center Peppin. So that means that Maple sees the literacy coach very little. But Maple's scores are where they need to be. So right now the district literacy coach needs to be focused there. So I'm working with the administrators to make sure that we're making hard decisions about what needs to happen at Center Peppin. I'm over in, you know, those buildings probably a little bit more than I'm in the other buildings, walking around classrooms, being, being visible, going to faculty meetings. We meet every other week here with the leadership and we meet regularly with the Department of Education Support Team that's working with our schools. So we're involved pretty heavily at improving the scores at Center Peppin. My second goal around professional practice, as the district leader, I will articulate and monitor clear expectations related to instructional practices at the elementary level in the areas of ELA and mathematics with the leadership team. Again, we're trying to drill down and really focus on expectations around the instructional practices that we have with the idea that we're moving three elementary schools into one building and we all need to be on the same page once we move into that building. We can't wait until we get there. We need to start moving there now. We need to start articulating what our expectations are.
Dr. Leclerc, I'm sorry, can we move back a moment just to Center Peppin? Because I was invited to the stakeholders group last spring.
Yes.
And I know a major concern there was the attendance issue. And I was wondering if that, if you've seen an improvement this year in that?
We did see an improvement in attendance this year. We received four out of five points for attendance through the MCAS. The school has really started to closely monitor. And an example I can give you is at the beginning of the school year, they started putting signs where parent drop off is. One side of the sign says, thank you for dropping off your child on time. And then after 8:45, the sign gets flipped to say, oops, you're late today, please stop in at the office, to try to get parents just used to, you need to get your kids there on time every day. And so they're trying to really build those relationships with parents. We're also doing things more carefully. If a student goes out for a month because of a medical condition, we're doing things like providing the tutoring and making sure that, we're counting that student differently than saying they were absent for the entire time. They're receiving services, so we're coding it differently, which is the appropriate way to do that with the state. I don't think we were carefully doing that before, so I think we've gotten better at that. So the attendance issues are getting better.
Thank you.
But it's still, it's a lot of work to have dialogue with families around understanding the importance of, you need to be at school every day because that hurts all of us if you're not.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep. So I'm going to move on to goal number three. Until the completion of the new pre-K through eight building in September of 2022, district leadership will monitor, oversee, and ensure timely progress on the project. For those of you that are on the building committee, you know that it's a pretty daunting task. We have building committee things that we pretty much do on a daily basis around here. So there are always, this week was questions about the fuel source of the new building. I mean, it's something every day, every day there are challenges around the building project. So it's just a lot to monitor and keep up. And once we actually start construction, my, you know, attention will be focused there even more to get weekly updates. Goal four, the district leadership team will continue to review various data points such as climate, curriculum, discipline reporting, and curriculum assessments to ensure best practices that address equity, inclusion, and diversity. Again, I come back to every group that I talk to, I'm trying to emphasize that our work around addressing equity and diversity doesn't just stop with racial issues, it doesn't just stop with discipline reporting. We're looking at the curriculum materials that we have in our schools. We're looking at library books. We're looking about at equitable access for all students in our classes. Today, we had a meeting with the Department of Ed this morning about our vocational programs. And, you know, are we bringing an emphasis on non-traditional genders to take part in vocational programs like getting young men interested in cosmetology or young women interested in building property maintenance, you know? So we're having these conversations every day at the district level in and all aspects of gender, racial issues, gender equity, all the different isms that you, that we have out there. So it's just something that we continuously have on our radar. The equity committees are moving right along at all levels and so they've made a lot of recommendations that we're trying to incorporate. My last goal is the district leadership team will accelerate the integration of technology at the middle and high school as a result of increased hardware availability. I am determined to get the technology access up to where it needs to be in this district. And we were fortunate enough this year to receive an $87,000 earmark from the governor with the assistance of the mayor and Don Humison and Dan Carey. And so we have identified moving towards a one-to-one computer environment at the high school as our top priority. That's going to be, those computers are rolling out in grades nine and 10. We also, because we were able to shift some funds from the high school, we made an effort to, we're at one-to-one capacity in grades seven and eight right now. Those kids are walking around with laptops every day and they're using them in all their classes. That's the expectation. So we're hoping to, we're not making huge investments at the elementary level, but we do know that those kids need more computers than what they currently have. They don't have enough. So we're shifting computers around, we're trying to get the newest computers in the hands of the high school students because those machines are currently six years old, which is too old for laptops. Maybe in your house, you have a computer that's older than six years old, but in a classroom, a laptop that's older than six years old is pretty much not able to be used. They don't hold a charge long enough to get through an 84-minute block at the high school. They don't, after six years, they're not able to be updated for all the software that we use, so they become useless. So we need to have a better turnover plan. So we're trying to really get the computers at the high school to where they need to be, hoping that we can get some of the, the computers that are maybe in the next few years down into the hands of the elementary school kids.
I'm just curious, if you're, if we're deeming them useless, what are we doing with them?
Ashley is taking them and seeing if he can use a lot of them for parts. Anything that can still be used will be turned down to maybe some of the younger grades. We can't use computers that are six years old for MCAS testing. It can't download the MCAS test, so we can't use them in those grades. But maybe as an assistive technology tool, we can put some games on them and they can be used in that way. But in our tested grades, which is grades three and up, we need computers that are more current. So, so we're really pushing for technology and I am bound and determined to get there. And I, I drive the mayor crazy about that.
So is the goal?
Yes.
So is the goal to have like each student at the high school to have like their own laptop that they have through the school?
Yes.
They use every day in their class? When is that like expected to be like?
So grades nine and 10 will be probably in the next one to two months.
Oh, wow.
Yes. And right now, we are still in the, in the early stages of decision-making, but right now we are thinking we are not going to be allowing students to take the computers home. We want to just try it and see how it works. It's, it's challenging, and I know you have one-to-one in your school, it's challenging if a student leaves a computer at home, then you have to have spares around. If they have the computer at home and they forget to charge it, then they walk into school that day with a computer that's not charged. So right now, we're assuming that every high school student probably has access to technology at home. For students that do not, we will make exceptions with some of the older devices that we have in the building, we'll allow those to go home. So we'll allow students to kind of take those, if you will, and use those, keep those at home.
I'm curious if the students are required to purchase insurance. Since they use them only at school, do they need to get the insurance?
We are feeling that they do not. That's, that's been our initial decision, but Ashley is still researching, researching that. The seventh and eighth graders are using them at, at school only right now. They're on carts and they've had them since the first few weeks of September. I think your son has one, right, Maren?
I'd have to ask him.
He does have one right at school.
I know he uses one at school, I don't know how, if it's daily.
Yes, yes, they have them, they walk around with them, yeah, they have them daily. Yep. So those are my goals. I wanted you to see them so you know what the focus is. I've tried to also address, you have this document, I've addressed specifically what area of the district improvement plan this is aligned with because I'm trying to again make those connections for everyone. And these are some of the action steps, the evidence that I will be able to share with you either at the midpoint or at the end of the process, and approximate timeline. So I've tried to give you all that information. Any questions about my goals? Anything that you think I'm missing?
Ambitious.
Ambitious? Well, you know, that's, that's cool. I'm sure, where would we be if we weren't ambitious? Right?
Right.
That's true. Be ambitious or go home.
So should we make a motion to approve these calls?
That would be great.
It's a move.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I just want to add one little comment. I mean, I think that, you know, when we first all joined the school committee, one of the biggest things that we were looking at and most concerned with was the hiring of our next superintendent. And I think that this, this set of goals that you put forward, the articulation of what goes into those goals and what your purpose is and what your vision is, is really shows that we made that a really strong intention for us to make sure we got a good superintendent. And I'm very happy with who we have right now. And just the work that you're doing, I think is really important to help drive this school district forward. So I know that was one of the reasons why we, many of us wanted to get hired in this role and become elected official on school committee. And I think that's this, your, this is fruition of that work that we started two years ago, so.
Thank you very much.
Alrighty. And we'll continue for the next two years.
Yeah. Considering there's no competition for our election.
I'm also.
Alright. So now on to matters for action.
Payroll?
Payroll.
Right. I move to approve the school payroll dated 10/10/2019 in the amount of $520,093.07.
Second.
All those in favor?
I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 10/10/2019 in the amount of $247,216.057.
Second.
All those in favor?
I move to approve the-
I move to approve the minutes from our regular session meeting on September 24th of this year.
Second.
All those in favor?
And we have an out-of-state field trip request from the Whitebrook Middle School and the high school as well, from the teacher, our band teacher, Mr. Lennon. The destination is the senior high school jazz festival at the University of Rhode Island at a cost per student of $40, and the source of funding will be through Elf Band Dues. This would be for February 29th of next year. So I would make a motion to accept this out-of-state field trip.
I will second that as a former band member. All those in favor? So we had on the agenda that we were going to take a roll call vote to go into executive session, but for a variety of reasons, we're going to postpone those issues and move them to our November meeting. So we will go into executive session then. So do we have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.